Hi, everyone. We're going to start the meeting. Everyone can have a seat. we're starting the February 20th, 2024 Committee Meeting of the Fairfield RTM. Can we all stand for the pledge? Thank you. Our first three presenters have to get across town to the Board of Finance meeting. So we're going to start with David Becker, our interim Chief Fiscal Officer. He's here to give us a summary of the ARPA reallocation. Welcome, Mr. Becker.
Hi, thank you. So would you like me to just walk through some of the adjustments?
Yeah, that would be great if you could just walk through some of them. Yep.
Okay. So you'll notice the increase line and it's in, it was highlighted. It would be in the right-hand column under Additional Funds Requested. So the main goal here was to move from a point of unknowns and possible risk of having to give the funds back. So if we don't encumber it by the end of this calendar year, and then if we don't spend it by the end of the 2026 calendar year, we'd have to actually give the funds back. So and that then also is if we were to encumber it, you know, it doesn't necessarily guarantee that it's going to get spent. I mean, it's obviously our intent and we have POs and we can do that. But we really wanted to try to move to, again, sort of knowns that we have no risk on the funds and we can allocate funds potentially somewhere else, bonding or budget, or in some cases, just cancel projects that were sort of wish list items that aren't going to pan out. So if you were to look on the right-hand side, again, highlighted Additional Funds Requested was places that we swept money ultimately into to net this out. So the biggest one you'll see is the paving and sidewalk repair. That is oftentimes one of the, just, you know, that's a big known and it's an easier place to spend the money. We can also encumber the money and off the state contract and then spend it over the next, you know, one to two years. So even if we didn't develop, well, we do have the list through data of all the locations, but even if we're 100% sure where we would go, we would be able to, through that line, very, very clearly make sure that it got spent. Another item is the townwide guard rail and fencing. So this was a gate at Jennings Beach, which would limit access after certain hours down there. And so that's a known, that's what we call shovel-ready. We've got the quotes and it'll be installed quickly. Another item, Perry's Green Bulkhead. So that project, that is a known, that is happening. It's beginning over the next few months. We already have bids and just the bids came in higher than anticipated and just due to the complexity. And if there's any questions on that, Mr. Hurley's here and could explain it, but that is a very complex project that, at this point, we do at least have knowns on the numbers and they'll be expended. And another area that we moved money into would be the digitizing records piece. That is, it's taken a little bit of time, it looks like, to kind of move that project forward, but we are confident that we'll be able to, that we'll be able to do that. And actually, just in speaking to some of the other departments, there's others that have some projects ready to go that we could do, so we put them in there. So those are sort of the, where we're adding. If you'd like me to walk through any of the reduction areas, there's a lot more of them, but.
But I think that's okay. We'll just go to the body for questions.
Hi, Laura Carson. Who are you, Madam Moderator, too, Mr. Becker? Can you just tell us if the Rooster River, that there will be funding available to do the project that's been promised to the people? We had a town hall, they're very anxious, it's been 20 years. Can you please tell us that where we're going to get the money if we don't use this money because the permits or the Army Corps doesn't come in time, you know, present the information in time? Can you please tell us how that'll be done?
Yes, so this ARPA allocation now, after an adjustment at the Board of Selectmen, which was then sustained at the Board of Finance, does have the Rooster River allocation in it. We do on the administration side, however, believe that it is a strong possibility that within a few months, we're going to come back for one final round of adjustments, which would move the Rooster River project out. In that instance, there is an allocation in the waterfall from a bonding perspective that clearly is set aside right now for, it's either going to go to a paving allocation or it's going to go to Rooster River. So if we flip from one to another, again, our intention originally on it, on the administration side, was just knowns and unknowns. So even if you were to encumber it and get 24 months in and not have all the funds actually out the door because of some sort of a delay, you know, during the process, and this is obviously very complex and Army Corps and other engineers, outside engineers involved project, our feeling just was that, you know, you're putting dollars at risk and we didn't want to do that. So it will go bonding if that occurs. But as of today, it is technically funded in here.
Thank you. And I forgot to say my name, Laura Carson, D4. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Carroll, did you have questions?
David, Chris Carroll, District 8. Two questions. The first is on the paving. Would paving normally be something, because of the duration, if they do a good job, a capitalized expense and not something that comes out of here? It looks like it always comes out of a annual budget versus something that would go into a long-term capital budget. So that's the first question I want to answer that one.
So, yeah, paving, paving and to a lesser extent, but more recently sidewalks, has definitely been an item that has bounced around a lot. Used to be bonding, sometimes bands, sometimes longer duration bonds, then there was a big drive to put it into the budget. Then I think it was sort of a cross-party, cross-board drive to eventually, you know, to take it out and then to put it back. Our budget that will be released later this week will, you know, maintain several million dollars in paving within the actual budget. And there's the beta report, so a lot of this is the catch-up piece. So this is actually more speaking to getting that, because what happened was there was an allocation that was several million and then when it was driven down, there's lots of paving that didn't get done. So now through the beta report, the point was to try to ramp up paving. So this is more of a ramp-up number to continue to try to get to a better baseline and then we can maintain it preferably through the budget. So, you know, it's bounced around a lot. I know where you're going with that.
Okay, thank you. And the second one, and I apologize, I'm new to this, when I look at item nine, Perry's Bulkhead, you're looking at the additional 600. What's the total cost of this project? I don't, it's not the million. What is the total number? There doesn't seem to be calculated here.
Mr. Hurley, do you have the answer to that?
Yeah, if you may.
He's in the back, he looks like he knows.
It would be true for any project on here.
Yeah.
Where's the total?
Bill Hurley, Engineering Manager, 1.6 million. It's the 1 million and then 600,000 request.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley. Representative Georgiades.
True, Georgiades, District 9. Hi, David. To follow up on Representative Carson's question about Rooster River, I seem to remember when the ARPA dollars were initially allocated, we were working together with Bridgeport because it's a common area. Now removing our dollars, does that complicate the partnership that was going to sort of resolve this together? Or am I not remembering correctly? Am I not remembering correctly?
You're going to predate me in this tenure, so yeah, Mr. Hurley can take that.
Bill Hurley, again, Engineering Manager. Yeah, Bridgeport's cost share, they are committed using their own ARPA money for $750,000 for the Fairchild Wheeler Golf Course. That's the one that is located in Fairfield, but it's owned by the city of Bridgeport. And then as far as any of the other ones, we are working with them, also trying to get additional grant money, depending on the situation, and we'll discuss that a little bit more on the next item.
So you'll explain, we're not jeopardizing any funding by postponing the money we allocate? Oh, you'll deal with that later because I want to make sure that we don't, you know, jeopardize this partnership?
Yeah.
Just, so there's no postponement of Phase 1 at this time anyways, right? So we're working with the Army Corps. There is a little bit more of a movement even than when we get originally, you know, contemplated the move, but though it's certainly slow and it has some, like, some significant timeline pieces, just to stay in compliance, waiting periods and things so that remains. But as of right now, we're not actually moving the money. And then, yeah, to Bill's point, even if we moved it, it doesn't risk that. And just to remind, and there's the other item for Phase 2 with the state grant, but then there's two other phases behind this plus what they're doing. There's a lot going on there, so there's just a lot of moving pieces.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to clarify that the presentation order is a little different than the agenda order today. There was a little goof up in the numbers and so if there's some confusion, this, I believe, is technically Agenda Order 8. Representative Steele.
Hi, Jeff Steele, District 3. I'm sorry, I'm a little confused on where we are because we seem to be, we said 8 and then we're talking about Rooster River 9.
Talking about ARPA and the Rooster River is in the ARPA line item.
So I know we just kind of dove right into it. Would it be possible to just tell us what we have in front of us? We have some new members. Clearly, I myself want to know this document just so I can understand the different columns and what we're referring to here. I know you dove right into it and everyone's got questions, but can you tell me, just, this is new, what am I looking at?
Okay, so, yeah, no, absolutely. And yes, we're bouncing around on some of the items and even the ARPA as your normal order, and I do appreciate just in that some of us have to cross-town the BOF. So there, so the first point is there is later on your agenda, a grant item related to Phase 2 of the Rooster River project. The Phase 1 is what's been inside the ARPA document and there's been the contemplation at some stage of potentially moving that to the bonding, but right now it is still here. So walking through the document, you've got all of the projects at this time that have any amount of funding and anything that it's got, obviously, if you just go column by column, obviously, you've got your projected cost on the project, expenditures that we've already made within that. There's an encumbrance line, so that's if there was a fixed amount in an open PO that they've already placed, you know, into the accounting system, UNIS. So it's at that point pretty much a known. And outside of one piece with a requisition line, that doesn't apply to most, but again, that would just be a reduction similar to, it's going to soon be an actual encumbrance if it's in that line. So then there's the net available in UNIS as of, and this was when we did this heading into the BOS meeting, which was 12924. So if you were to take as an example, the paving line, it started off as a 3 million. There was expenditures and an encumbrance that totaled up to 3 million, which is why there was no money available anymore. So if you move over to the next line, if we are sweeping money out of that account because we don't believe that either the project's closed and we're closing it, or we don't believe the project's feasible at this point within the ARPA funds, you'll see a reduction in that line to basically sweep out either all or some of the remaining funds. And then the next line over is the Additional Funds Requested line. So for moving money into a category, it would be in that final line. So again, if you were to look at line 2, the deck patio behind Senior Center, it was a $100,000 project. It had $77,040 in expenditures, which left $22,960 available in UNIS. That project has now been completed, so where you'll see a reduction in that, in that second to last column of numbers, of 22,960, because we're taking the money at that point away from the project so that we can allocate it somewhere else. And if you were to go to the second page all the way at the bottom, that's where you'll see the numbers start to tie out. And our goal in the end is to have everything match to the amount of funds received as ultimately being able to be expended. So when we are done with this project, ARPA, we have to net out to zero or we have to give the funds back. So the two columns that you'd probably want to pay the most attention to tonight would be for the numbers, it would be the excess funds removed and then the additional funds requested. So you would see that we're taking down the money out of, you know, the Senior Center renovations because that's been completed. You can go down to the downtown resiliency and you'll see that we're leaving 300,000 to do design Phase 1. And you'll see the high-intensity wave and erosion damage in resiliency is being zeroed out. At this point, we're closing that project. We're going to focus later on a master plan, but that was, we're nowhere near the point of doing something to that effect, whether it's feasible or not. So I don't know if anybody wants me to just, at this point, go down or you've got more questions, but that's how the bill sheet is built. So those two columns are probably your most consequential as you go down.
Thank you.
So just as a follow-up, so the funds that are taken out, that are excess and being reallocated, did you say you've identified where you're reallocating them to yet or it's within this scope?
Correct. That'd be the last column. So the paving, the townwide, the paving and then the 30,000 for the Jennings Beach gate, the 600,000 to complete Perry's Green within the ARPA funds, and then the 20,000 for digitizing records.
I'll set Representative Steele. Thank you. Representative Pistilli.
Sharon Pistilli, District 5, through you, Madam Moderator, to Mr. Becker. I had a question regarding the removal of Item 7, which is the High Intensity Wave and Erosion Damage and Resiliency Study. That, I know that that project had been under discussion and I thought that it was close to fruition and I'm not sure why it was removed. I was wondering if you can explain that.
So, yeah, so the High Intensity Wave and Erosion Damage and Resilience Study, as I understand it and sitting down with the folks that had flood and erosion who had tried to sort of put this together, it involved originally the concept out of, almost adding some sort of a reef barrier beyond even Penfield Reef to slow down the waves out there. That is, we're nowhere near trying to do projects like that. They're very expensive. They're unlikely in our area to really be funded federally, most likely anyways. And it has shifted in that discussion to a master flood and erosion plan for the town. We have, it needs updating, but we have a coastal. We do not have inland. We don't have something that ties the both of them together, that then speaks to the region and forecasts sort of the long and, you know, the short and longer term. And so there is a shift to try to focus on that. In sitting down with them, we had a concern that we are not as close as the Flood and Erosion Board sort of members may believe that they are on being able to put an RFP out that obtains that. And our concern is that if we were to drag sort of this out to, you know, by the time we get to the middle of the summer, now you're going to end up, you might find yourself in September trying to put this out for RFP, and you've got to award it, and again, are we encumbering it? And then, and if we run into any sort of an issue, even post-encumbering, we are risking the funds. So we are going to seek funds at a later date. We're not, you know, we're not sure yet. We're trying to get an idea of what that will be and then we can determine, is it a fund? Is it a budgeted item? How are we going to, you know, other monies to do that? We do intend on addressing the master plan piece, but it's got to be flushed out better and it's not this project.
Representative Asturita.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Ken Asturita, District 1. Question, so if I'm reading this correctly, Project 12, the Southport Sidewalks, that's been canceled, correct?
So it is not being, I would not frame it as being canceled. As far as ARPA funds, we have a grant and we have bonded dollars towards connectivity already in place that we haven't even spent out of. So until those are spent, to now spend out of the ARPA allocation, we need to get that done and then we'd have to go to the ARPA next. So to do that, again, pushes us closer and closer to a timeline where we're concerned. We also, in sweeping the funds into the paving and sidewalk repair account versus a specific Southport connectivity, give us flexibility between budgeted, potentially future bonded, and ARPA allocations to do a connectivity project still in that area. So part of it's just placing the funds within the right accounts to give us the flexibility that we need and making sure that we get the other items spent first before we, you know, rush into something. We want to do it right the first time and we want to, again, make sure that the funds aren't at risk.
Is this project still on the calendar to be completed or is it pushed off to a point undetermined right now?
Mr. Hurley will take part of that and then I can say.
Yes, the project is still going forward. As David mentioned, we have a grant and so it will go forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Representative Zesema.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Liz Zesma, District 4, through you to Mr. Becker. Hi, David, thanks for being here. Two questions. One, you know, again, an opportunity for new members to understand this. Everything that has been completed within the actual project budgeted cost means that it, you know, came in pretty much spot-on from the initial estimate, which is good. There seems to be a high rate of those. The other question is, so in order to get that 3.4 million back into ARPA but assigned to different projects, does it need to go through all three voting bodies again? So any movement from the original allocation would require a vote?
Correct.
Thanks.
And this is a voting agenda item, this, just put it into the chat if you're interested in speaking. Is there anyone else? I know I see Representative Barahona.
Representative Barahona, District 6. You might not have any detail around this and if not, I can go through the moderator to Julie DiMarco, but this nonprofit mental health line item that child guidance doesn't have the number of residents who are underinsured or without insurance, do you have any more detail around that? Just as a licensed clinical social worker, I find it, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm 16, nonprofit mental health, looks like they're giving back 150,000 because they don't have, looks like the knee or those who are underinsured or without insurance. Do you have any more information on that?
We can get you an answer on that more specifically as far as ARPA and finance end. If she said, you know, she was zeroing it out, we took her.
Yeah, took her work for it, yeah.
We can certainly work with the moderator and get the department head to clarify some of that.
Yeah, and I don't know if that's specific for, it has to be child guidance or it can be used for mental health. It's just, you know, knowing a student last year at Ward who was actively suicidal couldn't get resources because there were too many other suicidal children at Ward at the time. There's a mental health crisis and it just seems that giving back 150,000 when we have a surgeon general who has declared a youth mental health crisis seems crazy, not to make a light of things.
Yeah, no, we'll get some clarification on that and how that's planning on being addressed and get that back through the moderator and we'll also look at the points you brought up regarding that. To some degree, you know, ARPA, again, you know, timelines and how this is handled, you know, if there's other locations that we need to spend the money out of, then we'll take a hard look at it. I agree with you on that.
Representative McCabe.
Michelle McCabe, District 4, through you, Madam Moderator. Just as a follow-up in terms of asking for more information about that line item, if you can inquire who put the restrictions on the funding for ARPA, it sounds like there's a response to some kind of demographic or some kind of group with certain qualifications and I'm curious if that is coming from the town, if it's coming from the state, it can come from a lot of different places. So if you could get some clarity around that, that would be great.
Does anyone else have a first question before I ask Representative Carson for a second question? Representative Ratsky.
Pierre Ratsky, District 10. I just had a question about line item number 33, electric hybrid vehicles. What specifically was that for and why is there what I think is a substantial removal of funds, excess funds?
So this was the project that was behind Town Hall. There's chargers and there's town vehicles now that are electric. So this is more about excess funds at this point from the original allocation. So this is more about excess funds at this point from the original allocation. They had, at one point, contemplated some additional purchases. However, they, at this point, there, there's quite a number of vehicles, and they want to let it sit and then determine, you know, is that the right vehicle? Do we need different size vehicles? You know, some of them are small, and we're getting some feedback, sending a survey or crew out, or things with small vehicles is not the best thing. So, but they've, they, they certainly met their initial goal with it, so it's really more, again, sweeping out versus just spending money to spend money.
Thank you. Any other questions from the body? Representative Carson.
Laura Carson, D4, item, the diversity and, I think it's 39, diversity inclusion consultant, why is that being closed out?
So I, as I understand, this was an original sort of estimate on the amount of money for the initial study or, or plan, but there was a document, and that has been delivered within that number. So without something concrete and with a timeline that fits within the guidelines, the goal would be that as funds are needed, we would look elsewhere for it. So again, it comes back to knowns versus unknowns versus just a specific project trying to come off the board.
But a study was done, or a consultant did something.
Correct.
10,000, okay.
Yeah, I believe the board of selectmen on the night that they approved this accepted into the record, that document.
Thank you. Representative Zesma.
Liz Zesma, District Four. So I did a terrible job of asking that question. So yes, this is a voting item, but is there any, are there any changes that can be made without a vote? Is there, because I do remember a discussion about some aspect of managing this money that would be exempt from that. So I may be misremembering, I think is the word.
So to formally move between the lines, it would require a vote of all three boards. When we talk about the Rooster River, which is probably the only, you know, final item to come back potentially, then it does require all three boards to do it. There, you know, within the descriptions that you have, so, you know, I guess you could pick any of them, but there, there is some degree of ambiguity certainly in how it's titled and what can be spent, but at the same rate, you've got to keep to that overall. So there's a narrative piece that can have a little bit of adjustment just to keep us within the federal guidelines, but you can't go, like, you, you, you can't take the paving allocation and decide that you're going to go out, you know, spend it on more guardrails, right? That's a line item in here, and that's that. So, you know, like any item, it's a, it's a top line descriptor, but you can't, you can't go very far off that, if that makes sense?
Yet.
Honest assessment.
Number 17, the COVID recovery assistance, is that on top of other COVID recovery monies that most, if not all, towns in the state received during the pandemic?
Yes, this was the fund that was managed by Human Services. And so, yeah, there were, there were, I mean, there were a number of different programs, grants, and individuals, businesses, and the town had, including FEMA reimbursements. So, so this was that fund that was managed there, and so we, we were looking at this point to, you know, to, to, to get to a point of, of closing it. So we left some funds in there for, you know, things that might have been in motion, and not to just sort of end it at that, at that point in time, but in council with the department, we started winding it down.
Do you know what those, those monies were used for, just, you know, as an example?
Just some rental payments, some repairs, things along those lines. I wouldn't want to speak too far beyond that. I know that, you know, obviously, if you wanted a top level sort of descriptor of some of that, we can, we can do that. We'd have to go kind of piece by piece to sort of explain it out, but that was the general sense of it. You had to be in sort of like a dire strait situation was supposed to be the, you know, the, the purpose of it. So, yeah, nowhere else to turn, because as you mentioned, there's all these other places, you know, ranging from, you know, other types of grants, some federal programs, or there was a lot that was rolled out. So, yeah, they sort of beat back against the wall, and this is the last thing I can go to, was the, was certainly the intent. And, you know, working to kind of, as we are phased out of that window, you know, address that.
Thanks, David, I appreciate it.
Representative Steele.
Thanks, Jeff Steele, District Three. I just want to echo David, what Representatives Barahona and McCabe said. I, I agree, would be nice to get a little more clarity on number 16. I agree with the statement that was made by Representative Barahona that mental illness is true public health crisis, and I think it would be good to know. Why? And I, I see it says child, it's written here, child guidance is not able to use the ARPA funds, maybe true, would be nice to know. That's a lot of money that could be used in a lot of good ways.
Yeah, no, I, I, again, I, I agree, and from our perspective, when they came with that, we, you know, we, we made the reduction. It wasn't us necessarily even seeing it or seeking it. They, you know, the department came and said, this is where we're at, here's your narrative, and we did it, but you, certainly, you both, or all three, and others, I'm sure, raise a, a very valid point. So we will look into that further, and then look at what other measures are being taken on that front. And I'll get something back to the, through the moderator, back to the RTM.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Becker? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Becker, have a safe drive across town.
Thank you, and thank you for hearing my item earlier.
Thank you. Mr. Hurley, you're in the perfect spot. Now we move on to item, sorry, we're moving on to item number nine. Sorry, Chris, we didn't see your comment until, I apologize, a, a record keeper, didn't see the comment, or Mr. Becker, but feel free to ask it through me, and we'll get that answer to you if you send me the email, I apologize. Mr. Hurley, moving on to the Rooster River item, can you just give us a little summary?
Can you tell us what page on the backup it is?
I'm not sure, actually. Does anyone know what page the Rooster River was in the backup? I'll let him start the summary while someone can look into that for us.
Sure, Bill Hurley, Engineering Manager, Town of Fairfield. This item basically is a, an extension of something that the Board of Selectmen already had approved and provided a resolution that the town can enter, and this was back in August 2023, that the town can enter and deliver to Connecticut DEP all documents necessary for this grant and the grant application. This resolution's text specifically mentions that the town to receive, fund, and expend project costs, and, and to formally sign the forthcoming contract and agreement. The grant basically covers four categories. The DEP and the state were willing to let us expand on, on some of these, and so the four categories are supplemental funding towards any proposed detention basins. Another phase would be to remove sediment in the Rooster River to improve conveyance, and that includes the proper transport and disposal required. Implement green infrastructure wherever possible and economically practical, and to provide open space improvements at the Villa Avenue and Algonquin neighborhood for the detention and water quality basin. Well, this is a reimbursable $2.5 million grant, 100%.
Thank you. It's on page 99. Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Hurley? If you have them online, I'll wait a minute, just put your question in the chat. Representative Zesma.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Liz Zesma, District Four. Thanks for being here, Bill, and I just want to recognize Kristin McCarthy-Vehe and Governor Lamont for securing these funds for us.
That's correct, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Hurley? Representative Wolk.
Hi, Bill, how you doing? And thanks for being here, too. Jay Wolk, District Five. So it came back to me that, you know, that the project, we're waiting to hear from the Army Corps of Engineers, correct, before we can go forward?
That is correct. We have just received the initial comments from Army Corps of Engineers, and our consultant will be addressing them.
Did they, is this true, that they wanted to have the whole park, the park that you took us on, the little, little tour of Tuxus Hill Park, they wanted to take that park to use it as a retention center and not have it a park anymore? Am I hearing that correctly?
That, whenever you disturb wetlands, they always look for alternatives, and one of the alternatives mentioned was instead of putting this detention basin in the wooded area, which does have some wetlands in it, that we should consider or evaluate, basically putting a detention upon where the ball fields are. Yes, correct.
Okay, and that's where the pickleball courts were, were put in, too, down there, was there?
This is the lower part that they would.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, thanks.
Yeah, the soccer and the baseball field there.
I can't wait for this all to happen. All right, thanks, Bill.
Sure.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, thank you, Mr. Hurley.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a safe drive across town.
Thanks, have a good night.
We're going to move on to the noise report. We have Chief Cal Mars here. Welcome, Chief. If you could just give us a little summary of the noise report, and then we'll go to questions.
Sure, good evening, everyone. I'd like to first start by apologizing. I think the second or third column formatted a little weird. There was like some south, the word south after some of the, the lines. There was also some questions about the original report that was sent over through the Town Clerk's Office. That was a little bit confusing, so I'm, my apologies on both of those. The noise report for fiscal year '23, since the new noise ordinance, the chief of police required to provide a report to the RTM referencing, referencing date, times, dates, locations, and the disposition of the noise violations for the Town of Fairfield. There's a little over 400 reports for noise complaints that we received in 2023, of which the dispositions are, are pretty clear. So just to give you a little outline on our CAD system, which is a computerated dispatch system, the officers have a kind of a fixed choice of when they dispose of a call or close the loop on a, on a call for service. The choices that they are given are pretty much determined by what the computer gives them, which could be no report, CAD remarks, an infraction issued, or e-ticket, it might say, and you'll see those differences in choices there. They might say noise reasonable or all quiet, and those are just choices that they have, they're fixed choices in the computer system that they use to provide a disposition for the call.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions? Representative Georgie Otis.
Drew Georgie Otis, District Nine. Hi, Chief Cal Mars. Thank you for reformatting this. I would request that it also be revised on the town website, because when I go to the link, it's still in the format that was very difficult to read. So in looking over this, it's still, I find it somewhat difficult to figure out where there's a secondary or a tertiary complaint. And my question, my first question is, does this report identify every call that comes in, or just the calls that are resolved, or does, because it doesn't say the call and then the resolution? Because the, the column just seems like it's a resolution only, because one particular day, December 9th, I have printed out the beach report as supplied by Captain Koval, and Representative Pistilli has them. I printed out 40 copies for everybody. It seems that there's only one, on this report, one complaint for SantaCon. So maybe that's the only resolved and not the calls that came in? If you could go into further detail, I'd appreciate it.
I'm not sure I understand your question. So you're.
So I would think, as an example, on December 9th, SantaCon, on this report, you have, you look at 12923, and there's only one complaint, and it's Old Barn Road, which is not in the beach area. So this report would lead you to believe that nobody called in with a noise complaint. So the question, my question is, does this report show the calls that come in, and then the calls that are resolved? Or just the calls that are resolved? Because I know you said at SantaCon, it was so crazy, you, you know, that it was impossible to write all the tickets necessary. So can you, this is using December 9th as an example, can you explain why there's no noise or no noise complaints in the beach area on December 9th?
That is because there was no noise complaints that were received by the dispatch center on December 9th. So there may have been noise complaints, and officers were already stationed down there to address the noise complaints, and one of two things could have happened. No one actually formally called into the dispatch center and submitted a report for a noise complaint, and/or an officer did not initiate a call for a noise complaint. So an officer, if they observe noise, they can initiate a call by either radioing to the dispatcher or self-dispatching themselves via their car computer. In the event such as SantaCon on December 9th, there were no complaints into the dispatch center or officers reporting noise on that date, although we know that there was noise down there, there's no formal report of them.
So this does reflect the calls that come in? So someone could call in for noise, and then it's listed on the beach report as a trespass or an assault, even though it came in as a noise? Would it then be viewed as a noise and an assault? Or is it just how it's resolved?
It would be the disposition, which would be.
Disposition meaning resolution.
That is correct, yes. So in your example, it would be an assault, because we always go to the hierarchy of the violation. So an assault would be higher than a noise complaint or even an infraction. If there was an assault, we would use the assault because it's a crime against person.
Okay, thank you. I still find it really strange that there's no noise complaints on the December 9th.
Yeah, I mean, we're, you know, respectfully, we're limited to what the computer will provide us, so there were no noise complaints. And I'll double check, of course, tomorrow to, to determine. I, I don't recall anybody reporting noise. I was at work all day, I was there. I don't recall a report coming in from any of the neighbors, other than self-initiated to the officers that were on scene. For example, if you were, if you were down there and you saw, you know, an officer, obviously they had their hands full, but they reported directly to the officer that was down there.
And the beach report, as Captain Koval, is that how I pronounce it? There were only four incidents on the day of SantaCon.
That's correct. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions? Representative Wackerman.
Hi, Chief. Thanks for doing this. This is helpful. I had a few questions about what the dispositions mean. And if I could, what does it mean if it says no report? So if somebody did call in a complaint, but then it says no report, what does that mean?
So that could have been a couple of things. That could have been the supervisor canceled the call. So the officer would just write no report. In the case where, if you looked at, on one of the examples, it says CAD remarks, some officers will write, CAD remarks stands for computer-aided dispatch. So there's a, instead of a formal report, they could just put remarks, almost like a dispatcher would put in remarks to that call for service, and it would say area all quiet or no report. For whatever reason it could have been, they went and spoke to the complainant, and the complainant said, I don't want to report. I just want to let you know that there's, you know, noise coming from that neighbor's house constantly. And the officer would write no report, but there actually is a report generated.
Okay, thanks. And then sometimes there was an infraction. Sometimes there was an e-ticket. Sometimes there was misdemeanors. So can you just explain the differences? And are those all, are any of those for the ordinance? Or are they all state charges?
In my experience, I would have to look that up for specificity. The three choices, electronic ticket is e-ticket. And you'll see others that say infraction. They're essentially the same thing. The e-ticket is, and that is just the choices that the officers have when they go down. You might get a more senior or tenured officer that writes infraction because that's what they're used to. But maybe the newer officers write e-ticket or electronic infraction because the, our car computers can print out the infraction that used to be handwritten. So that's the difference between the two of them. And a misdemeanor summons is a higher violation. Those we don't have the capacity to print out from the cars. So that would be a handwritten misdemeanor summons, which is a required court date, as opposed to an infraction that is, that can be paid by a fine.
Okay, thanks. And then you need to check whether any of these were under the ordinance versus the state statute? Is that what you said?
I would have to check that, but I'm, it's highly doubtful.
That what, that it was under the ordinance?
That's correct.
And why is that?
Two reasons. One, the ordinance is not on our computer system. None of the ordinances are. So the officers would just as quickly choose a state statute to print out the infraction for expediency on the call. And second is that when the town ordinance requires us to give us, give the violator a warning on the first time. So if an officer chooses not to give a warning and writes the infraction on the first violation, it needs to be a state statute.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? Representative Waldron.
Cindy Waldron, District Three. Hi, thank you. You mentioned a number, I think it was 400 average. Is that typical or atypical? Is that on average? Is it higher?
I think overall complaints for the year, I'd have to look at our yearly statistics and compare it to other years previously. But I think that's, that's, that's pretty average.
Okay, thank you.
Representative Pistilli.
Sharon Pistilli, District Three. Madam Moderator, through you to Chief Calmaris. I appreciate your comment about the report being messed up. I don't know if it's possible just to mention whoever posted it. Like, we can't use the information like that, and we didn't get it in time to be able to do any analysis on it. So anytime we receive something like this, like the Excel that we got after the fact is awesome and very helpful. So that's the preferred method, at least for me, because I'm a number cruncher. I have, I have a few questions that I just whipped up in my little Excel spreadsheet over here. I saw that there are two complaints at 310 Autumn Ridge Road related to Sacred Heart football games. I know in general that that neighborhood is still really concerned about the noise levels. And is Sacred Heart, like, considered? Like, those are not, like, town-sanctioned events. Is there any plan in talking with the university about putting sound barriers up so that that whole neighborhood is not affected by how much the university has grown and how loud the football games are?
There has been some discussion with Sacred Heart University. How do I say this? There have been some discussions. I probably know of the individual that is on Autumn Ridge. We've had some dialogue, he and I, quite a bit, actually. And I totally understand and respect his position and his complaint on this. There, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a tough... How do I say this? So individually, I wouldn't know who to charge with Sacred Heart University. So if we, I think, I think finding a, a a reasonable or fair...
We know somebody over there.
We do. We definitely do. And he's, and he's the one I spoke to. Yeah.
Could we follow up on that? Maybe we can follow up on that.
Yeah. And maybe I'll reach out and, and, you know, let them know that it is a concern of the town body and that we need to do a little more than talking.
Yeah, okay, great. So I have a few more things. I see that there are patterns in terms of multiple noise complaints at the same address. So for instance, I don't want to go naming addresses, right? But I can see eight on Brook Lawn. And then, just as a matter of comment, 16% of the total line items on here, regardless of if it's all quiet or advised of complaint, 16% come from Fairfield Beach Road. I'm just making that observation. And then in addition, 16 alone are at an address on Miller Street. 18 came from one apartment building. 16 of those, or 15 of those, from the same exact apartment. And then two of them are from apartments that look like they're adjacent or, like, up and down from each other. 16 are from a building on South Benson. So in these cases where we see these repeat offenses, is there anything proactive that we can do to, you know, resolve the issues? Because that's like a lot of complaints from the same building or same apartment even. And in that case, are we, have they been issued tickets so that the town is recouping money for your time and energy in those calls?
Yeah, I mean, in cases such as that, I mean, I've never really done a deep analysis into it. Noise complaints are only 400 of our 50-something thousand calls for the year. But since, you know, we do have that type of analysis that we do in the beach area, because I feel like we get the most complaints from there or complaints from residents that are there, some of which, the complaints are civil disputes between neighbors. And that's where you get the apartments next to each other. We get that at some of the newer apartment buildings as well. And you're probably going to see that as we see the town grow with more apartment buildings. Does that help as an explanation? As I said, you know, I mean, this is...
Yeah, I could send this back to you with my analysis on it, too.
I would love that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, just because it seems like there are hotspots. And if that's the case and we're using police resources on it, then let's make sure that there are...
Take a deeper dive.
Fines that will cover the resources. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Representative Havy.
Representative Havy, District Nine. I have a question about the ordinance that was passed by the RTM a while back. And you said you're not using that. Is that correct?
It's not often that the officers use the noise ordinance. They normally use the state statute.
And you said ordinances in general are not part of your police computer system? Is that correct?
It's not, it's in our computer system, but it doesn't generate an infraction like a state statute would because it's supplied by the state, our computer programming.
Is there any way to get our local ordinances included in our local police department?
I'm not going to say no, but I think we've tried on other ordinances that we use fairly often. And there are some challenges because the company that does that for the state is reluctant to submit specific ordinance for each municipality. If I could, if I could just share that our CAD program, which is NextGen, is used, is sanctioned by the state and used for municipalities across the state. So for all the municipalities that have different ordinances for their particular town and different numbers associated with them, it would require a lift for the NextGen company who's contracted by the state to do that.
Sorry, one more question. So a little off the topic of noise, but in the same policing idea, for example, snow removal. We have an ordinance for that. And it's a safety issue. So if somebody calls and says, you know, the sidewalk in front of XYZ is not shoveled, how would the police handle that?
Jeff Minder, the tree warden, is responsible for, from DPW, is responsible for complaints related to sidewalks that aren't shoveled. And in the, after he goes and does his investigation, he would report back to us, and we would issue an ordinance or an ordinance violation for the sidewalks not being shovelled.
Okay, that was just a general kind of, because I walk the dog today, and there's lots of ice on the roads, on sidewalks. But I have one more question. I'm sorry. What is the amount of revenue or fines that have been collected by the police department on noise, or noise, since we're not using the ordinance on the state system?
So once we issue an infraction or misdemeanor or any type of violation to an individual, as soon as we submit the infraction to the Central Infractions Bureau or the misdemeanor summons to the court, it then falls under the judicial branch. We are the executive branch of government, and that they are, it then goes over to the judicial branch. We do not track what happens after the infraction is issued or the misdemeanor is issued to the individual. So once it goes over to the court system, whether it be central infractions or the state court, we don't track that.
Ask another question?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So we have no idea how much the state gives back to the town on their tickets? Whether it be noise or being on your phone or any of that stuff?
We do. There is, we receive a yearly check from the state for service fees related to fines. And each fine is, I guess, scheduled at a different rate. For example, if you were speeding, or if we issued a speeding infraction, the town might get returned $10 for the speeding infraction. But maybe if it's a seatbelt, we would get 50% of that revenue. And it's dependent on the specific violation that we charge the individual with.
Is that a report that we can have available?
I can get the, I can get the monetary value of what we receive from the state every year.
And that only includes any noise violations?
It is, and it's not itemized. I'll look into it. I'll see how they itemize that for us. We essentially just receive a check every year, but it's not itemized in what we're receiving, how the calculations are done from the Central Infractions Bureau from the state.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all that.
Sure.
Thank you. Representative McCabe.
Representative McCabe, District Four, through you. Hi, Chief. I just have several questions to ask you. I just want to start by saying that obviously, the ordinance, the prior one and the current one are meant to be a deterrent. And it's also meant to be helpful to you. So some of the questions I'm asking, if there's a way that there can be amendments, tweaks, resources that can help? That is why I'm asking the questions, to see, you know, what more could be done. So my first question is, it seems like the officers have been briefed in that the noise ordinance now is a 24-hour cycle. Because I was noticing, I was looking at that the older spreadsheet in the airport for a few hours. It was fun. I appreciate it. And thank you for the distraction. But it was hard to do. So this is not scientific by any stretch. But it does look like, once the ordinance was passed, all of a sudden, I started seeing a lot more daytime hours. So that said to me that, yes, there was sort of a new attention paid to that. Is that correct? Was I reading that correctly?
So the original report that was sent, one of the tabs was the raw data that came from the, that came from our system. And that was a little haphazard, like, the way that was spread out?
Was that like the second one, the first one? Okay, yeah, yeah.
So that was the raw data that came from. It actually shows the officers who responded, how much time they spent on each call. So that information came directly from the CAD system. And the other one, I tried to separate that information to just what was required in the ordinance, location, date, and the disposition.
Right. So it does look like there, all of a sudden, there were daytime ones. So it seems like people are aware that there's been a change, both in the enforcement community and the community community, which is great. I went and looked at, I just took a sample of a couple frequent flyers. And I'm curious, because one of them had 16 calls. And a chunk of them, there were four warnings, four advised, five no reports, one canceled, one police information, one reasonable, one quiet. But then there were four in October that resulted in some sort of punitive action. I'm curious if an officer goes to a place, is there something in the system that lets that officer know that this is a frequent flyer as opposed to a first-time offender?
If the officer opts to take enforcement action, they can look up to see the previous calls for service. In fact, when they, when the address comes up, it will say how many times we were there previously, but doesn't necessarily say. They would have to actively seek out that information within their computer system. It's, it sounds like not a direct answer. However, if it was a more serious call for service, there would be an initiation by the dispatch center. And there's, like, a noise complaint. We go on them all the time, you know? It's not the end of the world. And it's normally not as officer safety issue. So that's where, if we had, say, a house that frequently had domestic violence calls, that would come up as an alert to the officer.
So then it doesn't come up automatically? They get a call, there's the address, it's noise. They have to, when they're issuing warnings and stuff, there's no way to know unless they ask the system whether this person has had, you know, 16 prior complaints against them?
That's correct.
I'd be curious if there is some... I'd be curious if there is some easy solution to that, to make it easy for the officer, so that when they go, you know, something that is a ping that says noise 16 times, again, something that would be easy. But I think that's important because the problem is is that it's hard for the officers to be able to recognize and therefore immediately do something more significant than a warning because they're not necessarily aware that this person has had many calls on them. My next question is, what is the difference in this computer system and everything else between a fine and an infraction, if there is anything?
No difference, yeah. So if you're issued an infraction, you're issued a fine to be paid by mail through the Central Infractions Bureau.
And that does not go to the state? That just goes, that does go to the state? It goes to the judiciary, or it goes to a different place, or they all go there?
All the infractions go to the Central Infractions Bureau. Even a town ordinance, if we were to charge that on an infraction ticket, it goes to the Central Infractions Bureau.
Is there no way to issue any kind of fine outside of the Infraction Bureau?
A parking ticket.
So it's possible to, let's say, reinvent a parking ticket into a noise ticket, bypass the infraction swamp? I don't remember what it was called. Thank you Bureau, and just go straight to something like that? What would it take to create a noise ticket versus the infraction situation?
I would probably say that's a question for the town attorney. We do have quite a process related to parking tickets, you know, because you are innocent until proven guilty. And every, there has to be a judicial process around every enforcement action we take. The state centralized infraction bureau makes that judicial process easier on municipalities who don't have the capacity to take on a judicial system. As I said earlier, we're in the executive branch. We kind of issue the tickets and then we let the courts handle what happens after.
Okay, great, thank you. If it's possible, I'd love to circle back and see, especially in terms of the repeat offenders, if you have any suggestions or resources that might help with that, to make it easy for identification, that would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Representative Walk.
I tried.
Thank you, Jay. I'll get to next one.
Jay Walk, District 5, thank you, Madam Moderator. I have a, well, a first quick, you know, to Representative McCabe. We had a situation at Dogwood Green that I was involved with, and it turned out that many, many calls that came, officers were coming to this situation and I was involved, gotten involved with a neighbor dispute, my neighbor over a parking space. So it escalated into an assault to a police officer that I ended up going to court as a witness that the person pushed the police officer. And that ended up as an assault. And it would have been great, maybe, if the officers, because there were so many officers coming and so many days and weeks. This went on for like three months. I don't know, Chief, if you remember that whole situation? I think you were involved, weren't you?
I was.
So we know about that. But anyway, getting off of that, just a comment, Marcy and everybody, that that person that you and I both know, he invited the representatives for District 4 and 5. He got his little districts, I think, mixed up and he forgot that Sacred Heart is in 2.
District 2, 4, and 5 are going to Sacred Heart University, surely.
So we're going to be, so we can ask that about the noise and what's going on there then? You know, and I can report back to you. Thanks.
Thank you. Soften him up for me.
You should have seen his face Saturday night when he saw me.
Thank you, Representative Walk. Representative Steele.
Thank you, Jeff Steele, District 3. Chief, I just want to commend you and your force for doing a great job. And obviously, this can be looked at as something in a microcosm with Santa Con. That's a tough one to police. And I think, you know, I see four reports here. And I would hope that the police are more focused on the assaults and the drunk and disorderly and the traffic and the things that really, you know, save lives. But I can only imagine there probably weren't many noise complaints, being that the day was a noisy day. But I commend you for, you and your force, for doing a great job as well as you could. Obviously, we know things will potentially be improved if that continues to exist. But also, you know, we're going to see how this noise ordinance plays out. But what I think is so important is that you guys continue to have the discretion that you're advocating for, and that is necessary to deal with each situation on its own. Because each situation dictates a specific response, has a specific situation at hand. And I think having that discretion is absolutely crucial. And I think you're doing a great job navigating the course.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Donnie.
Just the right height for this. Hi, Chief, how are you? Through Madam Moderator. You mentioned the fact that you can't issue tickets from the car because the ordinances, local ordinances, aren't in the master computer. Is there any discussion with the state when they renegotiate with NextGen that they should do something where everybody's ordinance is? Because why do we pass them if you can't enforce them?
So we can, an officer can issue a handwritten infraction. It's just a matter of efficiency. If they can use, you know, a different charge, it's, you know, they would just use the state charge. We've also used the state charge only because if they decide or use their discretion to issue an infraction on the first offense, the noise ordinance dictates that we have to issue a warning on the first offense?
I understand. I was just trying to, so the Infraction Bureau collects the tickets when it's in the computer, right? The state one. So we could have them be doing that for us and monitoring and getting the records for the ordinances we're putting in place, if I'm understanding this?
You are. So now you understand why the state doesn't want to put our ordinances in the computer?
Thank you. Does anyone have an initial question? I have a list of people who are second, but any initial? Oh, Pierre.
Oh, wait, actually, yes, Representative Ratsky.
Representative Ratsky, District 10. Is the state law that comes with a fine as well, correct?
It does. Normally, we use creating a public disturbance. There's several elements to that crime, which normally fits excessive noise.
Is that fine greater than or lesser than the city's infraction fine would be?
I'll take a look, but I believe it's more. The fine for the town, I believe, is $100. Yeah, it's, I don't know of an infraction right now from the state that's under $100. Even a seatbelt, I think, is $127.
Just finally, you said that the fines are returned in a lump sum from the state and some of them are kind of prorated in that the state gets a certain percentage. We get a certain percentage. For that state law that you're using in lieu of the noise ordinance, is 100% of that fine returned to the town, or is it a percentage?
It's a percentage. And if you, and I would venture to guess that the $100 that we would receive back for the noise ordinance is greater than what we would get back from the state on the state fine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone? Representative Rock.
Dave Rock, District 2. I guess I'm just trying to play this loop in my head. So the RTM goes and passes ordinances and then is following up on them to see how well they are being executed by you all. And you're not really able to, or your force is not able to put in the details because you're using a state CAD system. And so when we ask questions, hey, how are we doing on the noise ordinance, or this, or that, or whatever? You don't really have the data because you're using a different system. You can't really customize it for our ordinances. Is there a, I feel like we feel frustration. Do you feel frustration?
No, I think when the officers respond to a call for noise, it's just another call for service. It's another problem that they're trying to correct at the time. If things become pervasive where, for example, 16 calls for service at the same location, they will seek maybe the next rank to deal with that bigger problem or, you know, that constant call for service at that call. In the cases where officers go to a noise complaint, they're just as much or as simply writing an infraction as if they were writing a speeding ticket. So it's, whether they use the noise ordinance, if I gave an order to give out, use the noise ordinance for the violations for noise, that's what the officers would do. In most cases, we just seek to go through and use the state statute.
Yeah, just to follow up, I'm guessing, you know, we're looking at how many noise ordinance were there on a specific date? And I guess what you're telling us is there could have been four, but there could have been 10? Or it all depends upon how we defined it, or what we saw, or how the officer was recording it? Is that accurate?
No, if someone calls in a noise complaint, it gets put in as a noise complaint. And it remains a noise complaint. And, you know, the disposition of the call may be changed to an assault, as the example given earlier, but it remains a noise complaint as it stands and as it came in.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Representative Carroll.
Hi, Chief. Chris Carroll, District 8. And I wasn't on the RTM when the noise ordinance was passed. And I tried to quickly look at the data. Since that was passed, it doesn't appear to me any more complaints have been written. And back to Representative Rock's point, has it made a difference? So the RTM passes an ordinance that says, whether you liked the ordinance or not, here's how we feel the town should operate. But it would appear that that's not being enforced. Am I reading that right, or? I'm just trying to understand this a little bit better.
I'm not sure of your question. Madam Moderator, can I ask you a point of information? I think it might be helpful for all the new members that part of the ordinance that was passed contained language which basically gave the officers the discretion to use the state statute if they felt that that was, that would better serve the situation?
Yeah, I understand the CAD system making it easier. Makes all the sense, it'll make the officers as efficient as possible. But it just sounds like, and this is what I'm trying to figure out, the RTM passed this noise ordinance. I think it was a little controversial, but it passed. Has that made a difference in the enforcement in trying to take care of noise situations in the town? Your thoughts?
No, not at all. Yeah, and I think I articulated that in my several meetings before the RTM. I knew, you know, when they passed the ordinance, I put out a training brief to the entire department that illustrated the changes to the noise ordinance, which there was a noise ordinance previously. It was far out of date, it did need to be updated. There are, you know, during the day restrictions and things like that, which help us to maybe articulate if we need to. But the officers, even though it would still capture the noise ordinance that was passed, the town noise ordinance, it would still capture that information. They could still articulate that information on a, an infraction using the creating a public disturbance and just cite the noise ordinance within that, creating a public disturbance. Is, do you understand that? Okay.
Thank you. Any other first questions? Seeing none, I'm sorry, but Representative Pistelli had a second question.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, through you, Chief Calamaris. Don't give me an Excel spreadsheet, just saying. Okay, so I have, here's my line of thinking. So I have the ordinance up, okay? And I'm going to paraphrase. So on the first offense, you receive a verbal warning. A citation of $100 may be given for the second offense. And a citation notice of $250 may be given for each subsequent offense within six months of the last offense. I go back to the spreadsheet. And there is one address. Is advised of complaint something? What was the, what was that one?
Advised of complaint is when someone complains that there's noise, let's say, next door. The officer finds that the noise is reasonable for whatever reason. They would go to that individual or the so-called violator and say, you know, hey, we got a report of noise at your home. I didn't observe anything, so I'm advising you that we did get a complaint.
Okay, got it. Okay, so I think this example would not suffice. But I think that there are other examples where there are repeat offenders, and I'll try to find one and then send it to you, where the fines would be more advantageous to the town if given under the ordinance. Because we do have cases of multiple complaints within six months. And so the town could be reaping the money back to put back into policing by, you know, 12, getting $1,250 back from a repeat offender as opposed to putting it under the state, you know, in the CAD system and then us not knowing what the money was.
Let me just clarify. In instances where there are five people living in a certain residence, let's say, a beach renter for a certain university, they designate an individual to take the warning on each different time. So if there's five people who live in a single residence, we can go there five times and get a different name for the offender. In which case, where they get five verbal warnings before...
So is that a loophole we should close?
It, I think we attempted to close that with the report that I gave last month, where we go to a certain residence on several occasions and then we charge them with that violation. And then that is the violations that we get where we go to the residence several different times. I think we used the Hookah Lounge as one of the, yeah. So that's how we tried to close that loop. And if every time we go to a certain residence and they say, you know, we ask, where's the homeowner? They send down a different student every time. So then we tried to use the other ordinance that we passed to try to collect fees for our responses to that residence.
Okay, thank you.
Representative Georgiades.
Drew Georgiades, District 9. Two requests, thank you for updating this. I'd like you to add the time of day because the, for plainly audible, it varies of daytime and nighttime. So if you could add that in. I'd also like to explore, the ordinance requires that we hear from you annually. Were July to June fiscal town? Given that a lot of these leases start September 1, it might be better to have a more of a July to June, like, I don't know, July 1st kind of thing? Might help the police to know, are these kids the same kids that, again, District 9 talking? So, and I think it is a loophole, back to Representative... So, and I think it is a loophole, back to Representative Pistilli, because my son in Charleston, every single person in the house was given the $1,200 fine. So, but I do have just some information I'd like to share. I worked with Chief Liddy prior to you. He and I spent a lot of time when we were working on the cost and the recovery of cost ordinance, and we talked a lot about fees versus fines. The fines are generated by the state and probably NextGen, and those are always shared. So they want you to put them in through NextGen because then the majority of the fine goes to the state with, you know, 20% maybe going back to the municipality of the fine. So Chief Liddy and I had discussed fees, which is what the noise ordinance is, a fee, I think, and not a fine, because we also discussed how to make the universities, which are nonprofit entities, and use a lot of our resources, how do we recoup some of the cost of the, that the town is putting out? And that would be through, by doing fees. So if we could maybe explore the fee versus the fine, educate the police officers of the fee versus the fine, and somehow, even if it's just one element, to say, instead of the CAD for the state, if you put it in a fee, whatever infraction you think, if it falls under fee, 100% of that would go to the town in my, my understanding through my discussions with Chief Liddy. And it maybe doesn't even matter what that fee is for, if the fee is for, I don't know, whatever. So that just, I wanted to share that with you, the fee versus the fine. We spent hours and hours talking about that. And that's my understanding of what this noise ordinance, $100, 100% of the $100 goes back to the town and helps pay for these so many calls that you guys head down there and spend your time working hard to try to keep everybody happy. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Representative Ludwig Sec.
Christine Ludwigzak, District Eight. Through you, Madam Moderator, Chief, thank you very much for your time, all your time this evening clarifying all of this. I just wanted to clarify, if you do, am I right in understanding that if you issue the state statute and we collect a fine through the state, is that, that's a more efficient use of your time for issuing a complaint to a noise or responding to the noise complaint? If you, to kind of caveat that, if you were to utilize a fee and specify the ordinance, if you were to give that order to your officers, what kind of paperwork or documentation and time consumption and resources, I guess, would be utilized on your end that might counteract the money that we bring into the town through that?
So is it more efficient to use the state statute for the officers on scene? It is. You know, anytime you're issuing a violation to somebody, you want to, you are essentially seizing someone's civil rights at the time that you're issuing a violation. So you want to try to minimize that time that you're spending with them, give them the violation so that they can move on and you can move on. With that said, we probably started with electronic infractions over the last four or five years, and I think that the state pushes for electronic infractions, not only for traffic enforcement, but any kind of enforcement. So when we issue a handwritten infraction, I'll be honest, I don't think a lot of officers even carry an infraction pad like we used to. I think, you know, as I said earlier, if I, if I gave the order that we needed to use the town ordinance, then the officers would do whatever they're instructed to do. Try to make their jobs as easy as I can, especially when you're dealing with individuals that are about to get some sort of violation, whatever that might be, whether it be an arrest or an infraction. So I don't know if I'm answering your question. Yes, there is efficacy involved with just using the state statute. We could lean on the citing of the town ordinance as justification for the state statute during, in our reports. But I do agree with many of the members here that we would recover most of the costs or 100% of the cost because the state returns a town ordinance cost to the municipality. I think, I think you all look at things differently in a sense where we are, you know, as far as recovering those costs for the town, from a revenue perspective, and I think from an enforcement side, we don't necessarily look at the revenue side of things, you know, when, when we spend hours and hours on an investigation into a certain crime, sometimes the juice isn't worth the squeeze, if you will, but we have to because there's a victim and, you know, it's just, the business we're in is different than, it's not, it's not a business. Sometimes I say if we were in business, we would be out of business because we're doing investigations that cost a lot of time and resources, but we don't get anything in return from that other than, you know, justice. Did I answer your question?
You did, thank you. I think my, mainly I just wanted to, I respect your time and I want the officers to be kind of most efficient in whatever streamlined, if it makes more sense for the town financially. I think as long as the noise complaints are, I guess, the objective of the ordinance was to minimize the violations. So if they're being fined or being administered a fee in some capacity, that punitive effect, then I would hope that that would deter, but if there is a financial gain on the town's end, then I can understand looking into that further. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions for Chief Calamaris? Seeing none, thank you. And I know you have to get across town too, so I really appreciate your time today.
Thank you. I'll try to get return, I'll try to get the Excel spreadsheet clarified.
Thank you.
And cleaned up.
And then the questions from Representative McCabe and Representative Bearhon and Steele. The mental health, you were going to follow up on that?
Oh, the mental health was a different speaker.
Wrong one, sorry. Too long. Good night, thank you. I'm sorry, we'll move on to Mark Barnhart and Erb Blimacher. I'm sorry about the pronunciation of that from the Affordable Housing Committee to give us a report on that, if you guys want to both come on up. Welcome and thank you for waiting. Oh, you just have to push the button down and you have to hold it the entire time, sorry.
It's lime cooler, like a summer drink.
Lime cooler, thank you. That's nice.
So happy to be here with, with Mark, representing the seven appointed individuals who serve on the Affordable Housing Committee. I'll just try to provide some perspective on, on what we do, what we've done, as opposed to try to go through all the, all the bullets on the report. So in 2022, we put together a five-year affordable housing plan that has really two basic goals. One is achieve a first moratorium from state law 830G. And the second is, is just as important, if not more important, developing a broadened range of housing options and locations, potential locations and, you know, potential units for our growing housing needs. Our work last year was focused on several of these strategies, the ones we thought were really the most, most preeminent ones. That includes the inclusionary zoning, set aside requirements, middle housing, so we're talking about duplexes, triplexes, quads, so forth, and, and the housing trust fund. How do we best use the housing trust fund? So before I just talk about each one of those three briefly, let me just talk a bit about the moratorium because everybody's interested in the moratorium. About mid-year, Mark expects to submit the required application to the state. So we're making progress. We've already begun, in fact, to chart our progress toward a second moratorium that would take effect four years down the road. Now, it's interesting to note that a large portion of the qualifying points for this first moratorium have come from 830G projects. So we've gotten, we've gotten units, we've gotten points that have really largely helped us to get to the moratorium. Going forward, we won't really have that source of, of, you know, of points toward a second moratorium. So we'll have to do a lot more work on our own in terms of producing units. So inclusionary zoning regulations requires a developer to set aside 10% of the units in a development, it's over 10 units. In the transit oriented district, it's 12%. And we've looked at the possibility of trying to increase that, that percentage. The problem is right now, it's a lot harder for a developer because interest rates are higher, cost of land has just skyrocketed. So we're working to try to find ways to get around that, but we have an idea in terms of how we can, we can at least bring that requirement down somewhat, and, and you'll hear more about that in terms of our work over the next year in conjunction with planning and zoning. The issue of middle housing, very important in terms of getting continuum, continuum moratoriums, but also just providing housing for, for our needs, for seniors who want to downsize, for millennials, for workforce housing, for, for other constituencies. So we continue to pursue sites that lend themselves to the purchase and, and/or repurposing of that, of that land. And some success stories include some of the great work that, that Mark has done in the Navy housing, the Parkview Commons development on Quincy Street, the two duplexes for which ground has been broken on Greenfield Street. But a lot of others, a lot of other properties that we look at with, with Mark's guidance and, and scooping that we talk about at our meetings and try to track and, and find properties that might lend themselves to this type of development. Another example of this middle housing is parking requirements. So it turns out that we have, we have some very underparked lots in, in town, some very large underparked lots. And so we're looking at revising the, the, the parking requirements that would potentially free up some land for much, much better societal uses, you know, including potentially affordable housing. We also have looked at possibly revising some of our zoning requirements and finding ways that might enable us to build more duplex properties on, on, on slightly less, less sized lots in Zone B, Zone C neighborhoods in particular. We've been studying it. This is one of the topics that we want to pursue with the, with the Planning and Zoning Commission. And finally, accessory dwelling units, ADUs. We, the regulations were modified a couple of years ago through proposal that came from Fairfield senior advocates and the Affordable Housing Committee. And pleased to report that, that there really has been activity there. In fact, we're permitting about one a month now at, at, at the planning department. And we, we actively promote these through seminars that we conduct, have been conducting on a, on an annual basis. Finally, a housing trust fund itself, we've been working to publicize the existence of the fund because we really need more monies for these two major goals that I mentioned before. So we developed, as we mentioned, a brochure. The idea is to try to leverage these funds as much as we possibly can, again, for these two major, for these two major objectives. So just, Mark, anything I missed that you want to add?
Thank you. That was great job. We'll go to questions. Are there, Representative Pistilli?
Sharon Pistilli, District Five. So since the change in the ADU requirements, approximately how many units have been approved, do you think?
So about a dozen have been permitted in, since the beginning of 2023. So these really only became effective, these became effective in, say, the middle of 2022. They've actually been revised twice in the last couple of years, but the, the latest enhanced regs became effective in 2022. And so we're, we've done about a dozen or more since the beginning of last year.
Right, that's great. So I happen to have one, which is kind of rare, but we moved into it. And at the time, we were not going to be able to afford to live in Fairfield. So my son was born needing some significant surgery that we had to pay for out of pocket, and we just were nailed with medical bills. And we needed a bigger house, and we did not think we were going to be able to stay in town. And an ADU, which we were able to rent, you know, for 10 years, like, kept us here. So I do think it's a win-win because now also, like, as we're aging, right, we might have a possibility to flip and then, you know, one of our kids could live there or we have, you know, rental income. So I do think that it provides the flexibility that we need, so I'm glad to hear that. Thanks.
It's a very effective use of the real estate that we have, and it can provide opportunities to keep families together, potentially provide affordable housing income for, for families, for seniors. It's a lot of, a lot of advantages.
Thank you, Representative Georgiades.
Hi, Erb.
Hey, Drew.
Great to see you. Drew Georgiades, District Nine. To follow up on Representative Pistilli's comment about the ADUs, what I hear most with older people is capital gains. They don't want to incur those capital gains, so if they can do the ADU, they move in next door, rent out their house, and then they can avoid the capital gains to the very end, right? Isn't that one of the biggest lures of moving into an ADU on an existing property?
I mean, there are a lot of advantages, and that's, you know, that's one.
I think this generation, the older generation, maybe the seniors, however you define seniors, I think I'm one now. So, but great, thank you for helping encourage those changes.
Thank you, Representative Carson.
Hi, Laura Carson, D4. Just curious, how much in fundraising donations do you get about every year? Or?
That's an easy answer, Mark.
Nada.
Zero.
And since you put out the brochure, still zero?
Well, in, in truth, we have not yet made a concerted effort, so we've developed an outreach plan, kind of a publicity plan, and so you'll be hearing more from us going forward.
I think it'll be easier when we have specific projects that have been assisted through the Housing Trust Fund that we can point to as an example. We did produce the brochure and had that available at the groundbreaking for Greenfield Street, but once those projects are fully developed, then I think that it's easier for us to tell a story around how the Housing Trust Fund was used to successfully create these beautiful units.
Thank you, Representative McCabe.
Thank you, Michelle McCabe, District Four. Hi, everyone. A couple questions. The first one is the key statistical data is horrifying, quite frankly. We're seeing almost a 62% increase in price, median price of a house. When you compare the median, I did some quick math and I'm not very good at math, but some quick math on the median income and the median price of the house has people spending 37% of their income on their housing when it should be 28%. So these numbers are very, they're startling, although sadly not surprising, great for those of us who manage to purchase early, but not great for everyone else. So my question to you is, you're confronted with this emergency situation for our town. Have you done a landscape scan of what are, what properties, lots, a list of possibilities? Like, and how many? Like, and how many of them are? If you were to sort of wave a magic wand and say, in Fairfield, there's this number of potential areas of either town purchase, redevelopment, whatever it is, what is that number? And is it anywhere near enough to help us with this problem?
Well, there's no real easy answer there. I mean, we don't have an overall number, Michelle. We've looked at, at town-owned land or its potential, and we'll continue to look at that. But it's, it's hard because so much of it is, you know, has another purpose or it's, it's, it's in a flood zone. We've, we, we do look at properties on a continuing basis. I mean, Mark is always looking for opportunities and, and forwarding them to us. And we actually have sort of an informal group as part of the, the committee that, that has made a, a rough list of potential opportunities down the road where we think we would try to, to get in and, and make a, make a pitch when the offer presents itself. One of the challenges is that the land is so, and properties are just so much, so dramatically more expensive that the, the challenges are severe. And I think we've concluded that it will be necessary to not just build up the Housing Trust Fund, but to offer, you know, tax advantages and, and, and grants or loans in addition to try to, to, to cultivate potential properties. So we're beginning to get our arms around it and, and, but it's, it's, it's a mammoth undertaking.
Do you have a estimate in that list that you said you have this list of potentials that you're keeping an eye on? How many properties or, like, how many units could be developed in those, in that sort of list of possibilities?
So one of the things which is least disruptive to neighborhoods is if you're developing at a scale that's contextual to the neighborhood in which it's, it exists. So that's why there's been a focus recently in looking at missing middle housing, two, three, four family units. You know, the issue is, as Herb just articulated, the cost of these, even on perhaps blighted properties, is such that it almost is economically infeasible to develop it at that scale because these properties are going for half a million dollars and up just as teardowns. So if you're then building a two or three or four family unit there and your land cost is that on a per-unit basis, it's, it's almost impractical. So the, the one option that we've looked at is to determine whether or not there is potential on properties that could support a two or three family unit on, that is not currently permitted. And so perhaps there might be some economies given there. And we have some evidence based on our analysis of our zoning regulations where a good percentage of our existing duplexes are built on what is a substandard lot size. So if majority of those units, or at least 50% of those units, are on lots that are too small, at least according to our zoning regulations, but they exist perfectly fine within the neighborhood, it kind of begs the question of whether or not our lot size requirements might be too, too much, too high. And perhaps in exchange for the opportunity to create one or more units that would be de-restricted as affordable, there might be an opportunity to create, you know, more than what is currently permitted. These are all options that we want to explore further with the zoning commission, Planning and Zoning Commission. And we're an, you know, the Affordable Housing Committee is an advocacy body. It's not a regulatory body. Some of the things that we've looked at in terms of strategies require, as we've done in the past, a lot of the work that we've been, we've done to date has been with the help of this body, the representative town meeting that created Housing Trust Fund, working with the Planning and Zoning Commission to create inclusionary zoning, inclusionary zoning fees and the like. So that's, I think, what we're looking at. It's, I think the approach is an all of the above approach and looking at ways in which we could leverage the assets that we have and create as many tools in our toolkit as we can. So, you know, there might be areas where it's perfectly appropriate to develop more intensively, such as around our transit nodes, which we're doing, and in which case the private marketplace is there to support it. And perhaps, you know, we're looking at ways in which we can incentivize them to do more than the bare minimum, than the required number of affordable units. And that may entail some of the incentives that Herb was talking about. And there are other areas of town that maybe we're just talking about a single unit or two or three family unit, but that may be difficult given land costs. So we have to figure out ways in which we could close that gap. So it's, it's really, and the ADUs are, again, looking at a great option to leverage the assets that we have and provide just a few more options for people in terms of housing. But it's, it is, we, we have the statistical data in there because it is sobering. And if you looked at it over time, over the 10 years we've produced in these reports, it's, it's getting worse.
Sorry, just two quick, quick questions. It's about the fund and putting money into it. One has ARPA funds. I know a lot of towns are using ARPA to build affordable housing. Is that, I know that it has to, our ARPA funds have to be encumbered by the end of this year, but I'm just curious if either that is an option and then the second is, do you feel that, I know that we charge builders who are building luxury, large homes a fee that goes into the trust. Is there opportunity to charge more? I think I saw an article where Westport was looking at us and saw that New Canaan is charging more than we are. Is there an opportunity to do that as well between those two options to give you more money to work with?
So let me let Mark talk about the ARPA funds. Since, since I don't have, I don't have a good answer for that, but, but as far as, so that's what I was getting to before, Michelle, was the, was the, it's, it's, it's 10%, development 10% or more units, 10, 10 or more units, 10% have to be allocated for, as affordable, as capitalally affordable. And we round up, so 12 means two and so forth. And, and we're looking at the possibility of maybe bringing that threshold down somewhat. So that's one way of producing units. There's also an inclusionary zoning fee where the affordable units don't, do not come into plays. And so we, we have, that's another source of, of getting additional revenues. Could we increase those? We certainly could, but, you know, we're also competing, it's, it's one more fee that, that, that's, that's layered on everything else that people pay to build these days. So, you know, it's, we're looking at that, but it's, you know, it's, it's, it's not an easy call, I guess.
Yeah, the short answer is we're, we are looking at that. We do compare ourselves to surrounding communities. We're currently providing comments on a proposed text amendment before the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding a payment in lieu of providing the affordable units within an affordable homeownership, while within a, a for-sale development that ordinarily would be required to provide a certain number of units that would be affordable. We're considering a proposal that would provide at the town's option, the Planning and Zoning Commission's option, an opportunity to assess a payment in lieu only for, for-sale developments. We think generally that having the town with additional tools at its disposal makes sense. On the other hand, we are, we, and we think that for-sale is different than rental-type units, and there needs to be a distinction drawn there. But we are concerned about the proposed formula for the fee, and we're proposing a much higher fee formula based on our research of what surrounding communities are doing. And the same holds true with inclusionary zoning provisions other, otherwise, whether that fee is five per thousand or 10 per thousand, as in the case of New Canaan. We can look at that, but as Mr. Limecooler indicated, we're also cognizant of the other fees that are assessed for inflow infiltration, all the other things that, that we do assess a fee for. So we want to make sure that we're understanding what the total cost is to an average person, a person who's building a home. And that's, you know, we do hear from Home Builders Association when we enacted the inclusionary zoning fee at first, there was some, some comment and criticism from the Home Builders Association. So we try to, you know, manage and balance all those things. But the short answer is yes, we're looking at that. And ARPA, that is certainly at your discretion. I think it would be far easier if we had a specific project use in mind. And right now, we are able to meet our current obligations through the Housing Trust Fund. That's not to say that it wouldn't be welcome, but I don't have an immediate need for that. And I've, I've heard earlier commentary as to, we have a time crunch that we need to encumber and spend the funds by.
Thank you, Representative Barahona.
Representative Barahona, District Six, thank you so much. This is such, such important work. I echo some of the sentiments about the ADUs. In fact, I'm looking for that option for my aging in-laws and thinking of moving out of Fairfield to take advantage of, you know, the ADU situation where they live. So love that that's being considered and would love to increase that even more from one a month to, to more. It, it solves so many problems, not just the affordable housing, but the cost of healthcare for our aging seniors, all, all the things that, you know. So applaud you for that work. I want to just remind people, you know, that for those who don't know, and this is my work as a social worker, right? There's the federal poverty level, which is set for the country, which is kind of useless because whether you live in the Mississippi Delta or in Fairfield, it's the same number. So we have something called ALIS, Asset Limited Income Constrained Employed Households. And these are working people, and that's 28% of our residents in Fairfield are ALIS. That's an alarming number. And so I would like to think we could appeal maybe to the community, the 73% or whatever it is that aren't, right? And for those, you know, who complain repeatedly about 830G, I think of my income tax and do you want to donate an extra dollar, $2 or $3 for certain things? Is there an opportunity? Have you talked about that in town for, I'm not sure if property tax bills are the right time to do it, but, you know, some opportunity for residents to put their money where their mouth is a little bit when, you know, people are upset about the need for 830G, but we don't have money to fund the, the local plan that we have created as, as Fairfield residents?
Not at this point. But, but it's, you know, it's, it's great thinking and, and we, we need to be really creative and look for ways and really publicize this issue and really make a, a concerted effort to, to fund the trust.
Thank you, Representative Zesma.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Liz Zesma, District Four. And honestly, I can't thank you enough for, for what you're doing, Herb and, and Mark. You know, it's not hyperbole to say that the future of this town and the state is really uncertain without an aggressive attempt to create more housing diversity. You know, there are really loud voices that are lobbying against 830G, and remarkably, a few of them either have or previously sat on the TPZ. And what we don't hear enough about is what can we do within our own zoning that allows us to develop affordable housing on our terms and not only deliver the product, but, you know, design it as, as we would prefer. Nick Lieber can probably correct me on this if he needs to, but I think if the Fed cuts interest rates later this year, we might actually see some softening of the real estate market. I don't know how significant, significant it would have to be to help you guys in terms of, you know, pricing out properties, but I do understand that that's, but that we're probably going to see a correction in the real estate market.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? I see none. Thank you, Mr. Limecooler, and thank you, Mr. Bernhardt. Thank you for waiting so much.
Thanks, thank you.
We're going to go on to the Fair Rent Commission. We thank everyone who's waiting here. We're going to start with Mr. Abraham. Did I say that correctly? You can come on up and let us know a little bit about yourself and why you'd like to be on the Fair Rent Commission. Yeah, you have to unfortunately hold the button the entire time you're speaking.
That's a whole job by itself.
Yes.
Ahmed Ibrahim, I live in 18 Old Stradfeld Road, so I'm not on the other side of the town, it's a short ride from here. I moved to Fairfield in July 2009 to work in Fairfield U. That's my full-time job in the business school. The reason I, I am also CPA, I'm practicing CPA, I have my own practice. I am also in the real estate market, so they classify me as a landlord for this commission, and I will not object to that. So I am a landlord technically. Either myself, we own some rentals in the town, or as part of a real estate group, we own also rentals all over the state, from Stanford to Arlington and North Vegas. The reason I would like to join this commission, I received an email and I think related to discussion we just had, I believe, and housing, some COVID crisis, I will not necessarily COVID crisis, but there is a housing issue all over the state, especially here in the town, that is sometimes stand against creating a diversified community we like to have. So I thought it's a great chance to serve the, the town and the community, and I welcome any chance to serve. That's all I can say, I guess.
Thank you, we really appreciate that. Are there any questions for him? Representative Zesma.
Thank you, Liz Zesma, District Four. And thank you, I was going to address you as Dr. Abraham unless that's.
You don't have to, I guess. It's good.
Thank you for stepping up. You have an extremely impressive resume. But as a landlord, I just would like to understand your understanding of something that was a contentious debate when we were passing this ordinance. And that is that many people somehow feel that this is rent control, which of course it isn't, and that somehow or other commission was going to override, you know, the markets. In other words, sort of create their own market. I just want to clarify that you understand the role is that we are simply using the actual market comps is the best way to do that, to determine if a landlord is either charging an egregious amount or, you know, has really deviated from, from what's fair. So I, I just want to have your assurance, you do actually believe that is the goal of this commission and is just as fair to landlords as it will be to tenants.
I fully understand your point, and I will say at least two things. I can say more, but at least two things. The word fair is the right word in the title of the commission. That's the whole goal, to make it fair and fair for both sides. It should be fair for both sides, I guess. I really, if you ask me, I really don't like the word landlord for some reason, but we're using it. My belief is the relation should, yeah, money is important for all sides, it's always important. But my belief is the relation should be on a personal level first and foremost before anything else, and it's beneficial for both sides. And as a landlord, I will tell you that myself from some experience, it's beneficial for both sides to make it more about the personal relation, two human beings dealing with each other before anything else. That's the understanding I have for the relation, and that's, I guess, one reason why I like to serve in the commission like that, to make it fair for both sides.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Giorgiades.
Drew Giorgiades, District Nine, welcome. Thank you for your interest. I say this to every single person, this commission has five people. You sound very qualified and very busy. Will you have time to participate fully in this? and very busy. Will you have time to participate fully in this commission if you were approved?
I get this question all the time in different capacities, and my answer usually is, someone said, if you have a challenging task, give it to a busy person. Someone said that. I don't forget. I don't remember who said that. The serious answer is, whenever there is a mission I believe in, something I believe I need to do, I find the time for it, that's for sure.
Well, thank you very much. We've had issues in the past where we don't have someone, and then we don't have a quorum, and then, you know, sort of the, nothing can get done. So thank you for your commitment, and thank you for your interest.
I'll tell you again, just a personal level is, I never look for something just to hold the mic or speak in the mic. I never like that. If something I commit to, I know I will commit to, I'll find the time for it, for sure.
Thank you, Representative Steele.
Thank you, Jeff Steele, District Three. Thank you, Mr. Abraham, for coming before us. You mentioned, just so I have a better understanding, you mentioned you're technically a landlord. Why did you say that technically? Do you not consider yourself one, or?
Because I guess I am not the typical landlord, because that's why I don't like the word. The typical landlord, when we look at the word landlord, or this guy who's just, you know, I don't know, is abusing is the right word, or sort of taking advantage of people who need housing. I don't like this idea. I can tell you, all the tenants we deal with are, and I mean friends, personal friends. We never have issue with any tenant because we keep it as a personal relation. It's two human beings dealing with each other before anything else. I can tell you, I can talk, I know your time is limited. I can tell you, our policy by our women, our group, is before we look at the credit report and the income documents and the typical landlord stuff, we just see the person, this person, because the idea is if I share my house with you, now we are a family. So we have to keep it this way. That's why I don't like the word. I would never practice the word with the general meaning of it.
It is probably one of those words we could probably change. Maybe "leaseor" could be a better word. Now, when you have, you have seven rental properties, are these like apartment complexes or individual units or full buildings or?
These are the ones we have here in Fairfield with partners. Some of them are one family, some of them are condos. That's the ones, you mean the ones we have here in the town. But for disclosure, we have outside the town, Stanford, Clinton, this apartment complexes, mainly condos.
Okay. And you said your tenants are people you know, friends or your acquaintances with. So do you deal with them when you're renting out your properties? Are you dealing with them specifically? And are you managing issues in their home like a quote-unquote typical landlord?
I am the one who sign every single lease. I am the one who collect every single check. I am not the one who do repairs. Other people do repairs, what I get the calls. Yeah, it's a personal relation. And people I know for years since I came to Connecticut, and all of them are best friends.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? I've seen none. Thank you so much for coming out and spending your time here tonight. The clerk will let you know if you have to come back. Thank you. We'll bring up Tom Lambert, repeat visitor here. We miss him. He was on the RTM last term, for those of you who are new and not aware. Welcome, Tom.
Good evening, Tom Lambert, District Three. Now, now five, I think it is. When I stepped off the RTM, I did so because I felt like I had some time commitments that I wanted to give my full attention to. You know, shortly thereafterwards, that I thought twice about that. And the Fair Rent Commission is one of my proudest, I think, achievements in my short time on the RTM, to have co-sponsored the ordinance that created the Fair Rent Commission with a few others here. And it's something I believe in very deeply and very passionately. So I'm glad I got to, of all the meetings to sit through until, what is it, midnight, to hear from the Affordable Housing folks first, to hear from fellow potential commissioners to the Fair Rent Committee. I'm just, I am, it's something that I feel very strongly and passionately about for any single issue that I think that I had before me as an RTM member. So for those of you who don't know me, in addition to formally serving on the RTM, I am a commercial litigator for Pullman and Comley, a law firm that I operate out of in Bridgeport. I have a fair amount of experience doing actually pro bono housing eviction work. I was actually in court today in Stanford for that. Housing is just something that has always resonated with me. And I think a large part of that is because I was lucky enough to be born and raised and grow up in Fairfield, and it was such a tremendous opportunity for my brother and I, so much so that after living in Stanford, after graduating from law school for six years, I moved back to Fairfield. And it's a place that I am really thankful that I get to have my family, you know, raised here and go to the same schools. And I wish that opportunity for everybody. And it's, I know it's unattainable to some degree. The amount of inventory, housing inventory in the market is such that I think there is scarcity. I think I will use the word crisis to describe our housing situation, both in town and in the state. And whatever in the, you know, all-in approach that Mr. Bernhardt described previously could be done to help, I think is important. So in addition to our statutes and zoning policies, having a Fair Rent Commission is just one of those tools to help make sure that people get that opportunity to be in town and don't have to face the sort of unconscionable rent increases that give landlords the bad name that the previous nominee, you know, is reluctant to use. So I'm excited to work. I'm excited to, you know, throw myself into this. I'm excited to, you know, to see what comes before us, and hopefully people do take advantage of it. I do take it very seriously, the idea of fair in the Fair Rent Commission, fair to both sides, fair to landlords and tenants. And hopefully I can use my experience for the betterment of the commission.
Thank you, Tom. Are there any questions? Oh, Representative Steele.
Thanks, Jeff Steele, District Three. Tom, that was a very thorough and thoughtful response and presentation. Quick question, basic. The three-year term, is that something, is that what you want, is three years? I know there's two years, there's one year. Were you asked to do three? Did you ask to do three? Just curious.
I was not asked. I found out after the fact that I was being nominated for that. In fact, I, when I submitted my application to the town, I was agnostic as to whether I would be working towards fair rent or affordable housing. So however I can serve, and whatever rule I can serve, as best I can serve for whatever need, I'm happy to do it.
I appreciate it. For the term, you're...
I'm agnostic.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Representative Zesma.
Liz Zesma, District Four. I just want to thank you for the work you did on this ordinance, and I'm obviously thrilled to see you come back into public service. And thank you for stepping up.
Happy to do so.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Thank you so much for coming back, Tom. Thanks. Moving on, we have Mr. Doug Jones on line, who is also a former RTM member, not recently, however. Doug, welcome to the RTM. Thank you for waiting. And can you give us a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve? Doug, you have to unmute yourself.
I'm a little on the geriatric side.
You got it now.
Hi, I'm Doug Jones. I've lived in Fairfield for 35-plus years. I was raised in Witchfield County. I'm a Connecticut Yankee, I think. I've been a tenant and a homeowner. I've never been a landlord. And frankly, I've, this is a, this is a new area for me. But I've been a compulsive volunteer. I've been a elected or appointed official in town for the last 25 years in a variety of capacities. And I think there's a lot to learn here. I think that it's appropriate that we had a presentation from the Affordable Housing guys just before this, because this is certainly part of that, that effort to make Fairfield affordable as we can. I do not come to this opportunity as, you know, somehow prejudicial against landlords. You know, everybody needs to make a buck, and everybody needs to make a fair dollar. But I see this, this job, as Liz said, looking at, you know, comparable situations. And again, maybe the Board of Assessment appeals is similar. There's a, there's a level of fairness to achieve, and I don't think that the, the needs and abilities of a candidate are such that they might exclude me without any specific experience. But I'd be happy to do it.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Jones? Oh, Representative Asturita.
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Ken Asturita, District One. Mr. Jones, thank you for being willing to step forward, but I do have a question for you. I noticed on your application that you said the reason you chose to get involved is because you were specifically recruited by the First Selectmen. Is that, is that correct?
That's true. Bill asked, Bill asked me if I do it.
Was there any particular reason or any particular area of expertise that, that he would have, he asked you that?
You'll have to ask the First Selectmen about that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Asturita. Are there any other questions? Representative Steele.
Jeff Steele, District Three. Hi, Doug.
Hey.
How you doing?
I'm doing well. Miss you.
I miss you too, Doug. My same question I asked Mr. Abraham earlier, just, are you looking to do one, two, or three years? I mean, do you care, or?
In fairness, I would slot it for three years. I didn't ask for a particular term. And I think, as I said before, the Board of Selectmen, if, if it seems appropriate to move me to a different term to make room for, or as we said, prioritize, excuse me, others who might have more specific qualifications, I would not object. But at the moment, I'm up for the three, the three-year term.
Thanks, Doug.
Yep. Thank you. Good to see you.
Thank you.
You as well.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Jones? Doug, can you just confirm for me? So you were a tenant, but now you're not a tenant, right? You're a homeowner?
No, I've been a homeowner in Fairfield, same house.
Great, okay.
Thirty-five years.
Great, thank you. Are there any other questions? Representative Asturita has another question.
Yeah, Madam Moderator, thank you. And this is more of a general question. I'm not sure if anybody present here tonight can, can address it. But I thought on the commission that priority needed to be given to a landlord, tenant, and three others. As I'm reading this, we don't have anybody to represent the tenant. So is it appropriate to be voting on these nominations when the committee is not yet filled?
Thank you. I believe, watching the First Selectmen's meeting, they did try to appoint some, but they had to go back to the drawing board for some additional comments. So I believe that they have faith that there will be a tenant appointed. I'm not sure if, not sure if our First Selectwoman, our Selectwoman Vitale wants to make any comments. She is here. She might be able to be more informed than me on this.
Yeah, and I guess the, the other part of that question is, does, by appointing these three individuals, does that mean that this commission is now functional and operational, and they can hear, they can hear appeals? Or do you still have to have the tenant and the additional member before they can do that?
My understanding is that this commission would not become active until fully staffed. And as the moderator stated, at the last Board of Select meeting, we had a couple of candidates that we were going to vote on, but we needed to have additional discussion because we had too many renters and too many landlords. And upon further review of the ordinance, there can only be one renter and one landlord, and none of the alternates could be a renter or a landlord. So that is where we are right now. But we are looking to prioritize filling this commission. The Board of Selectmen has voted, so I don't want to go past what we've putting before you tonight.
No, understood. But, but so just to confirm what you're saying, is that, is that the commission is not functional until that, that tenant is found?
I don't think they're going to have a quorum, and it won't be meeting. And I will defer actually to the RTM, being that it is your ordinance. We are working. This is a new commission. But my understanding is that, first, I don't think there will be a quorum to have a meeting. And then in order to be properly staffed, we have to have the landlord, which if, you know, the candidate before you sign his approval, have that. But the tenant will need to be on the commission before anything can be done.
Thank you. Madam Moderator, can we just get the, you know, yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Sure. So we'll ask the town attorney for confirmation that... Are there any questions or comments?
Madam Moderator?
Is that Doug Jones? I'm not turning around.
For what it's worth, I have been a tenant in New York City, in Norwalk, and in Westport, and actually for about a year in Fairfield, prior to the purchase of a house. So I have some experience in that regard.
Thank you. Unfortunately, the particular ordinance requires we just have one tenant...
Okay, I wouldn't call myself a tenant.
That are active.
Current tenant, no.
And I think that's where we, the Board of Selectmen, there was some discussion of current status, because people, you know, go through in the course of their lives, become a tenant or a landlord, but really making sure that we check those boxes.
Thank you. Is there anybody here that can speak to our ordinance that we wrote regarding the tenant, if they can function as a quorum, if they have three out of five without a tenant?
I can probably address that, Marcy. I mean, there's a couple of things. Obviously, you have to have a bipartisan group. So while you would have a quorum, the body's not fully set. So you would, you would have, in this case, if it's approved, two Democrats and unaffiliated. And it's supposed to be politically balanced. That's one thing. But also, you don't have a tenant, which is obviously a current one, a current tenant. So I would, my opinion would be no, until that's done, which would lead to my question, if I still have the floor, to you, and that is, and I didn't, I didn't attend the Board of Selectmen meeting, nor did I watch it. Why wasn't a full slate? I mean, I know there was some back and forth, but why wasn't then, it deferred so that a full slate would be voted on at once?
I didn't set the agenda. We, at the time, did not have, I believe, a tenant that had applied. And this, I believe my timing, you can correct me, this commission was approved by the RTM in June. So there was a definite, I think, feeling from the First Selectmen to have forward movement, because nothing had been done for, for many months. We had qualified candidates at the time, so we basically voted on who had applied at that time based on their qualifications. I think that the people that we approve are highly qualified and dedicated to moving the mission forward. are highly qualified and dedicated to moving the mission forward. Since that Board of Selectmen meeting, other residents have applied for the commission. The first selectmen got a few of those residents forward on the last Board of Selectmen agenda, but we did not move forward because there was a conflict. We had too many, as I stated, people who were landlords and tenants. They were also slated as the alternates. So there needed to be some adjustments, because as you said, we have to be sensitive to party affiliation and also making sure that there's not a tenant and a landlord as an alternate. So that's really why you only have people before you today. And I would say in the next month, you should probably expect, or a month or two, the way your meeting schedule is, would see this commission fully staffed.
Thanks.
Thank you, Selectman Vitali. Representative Pastelly.
Sharon Pastelly, District Five. I did speak at the Board of Selectmen meeting. And I just wanted to say thank you for moving this forward, because to have it sitting stagnant, I mean, June, it's the summer, so we're going to lose time over the summer anyway. But to finally gain traction on it after more than six months of inactivity, we appreciate that.
Thought it was important to move it forward. And I thank the residents that stepped up early and that discussion at that Board of Selectmen meeting, as I stated, I think just created interest from other people who have stepped forward. So I'm happy to report that we have a lot of candidates now that we can choose from and look forward to getting more candidates before you and get this commission underway, because the work, as we've heard tonight, is needed. And we should be very proud that people have stepped forward and willing to serve in this capacity.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Representative Esma.
Thank you, Liz Esma, District Four. I do believe we have populated new committees and commissions in the same manner in the past. But that's not something we need to discuss. But I do believe that has been the case. So Doug, and I'm not turning around either, because it's too painful. But I did want to say that most people in this room probably don't know the enormous history of your service to this town, your contributions, especially on this board. And I just wanted to say I would be very happy to welcome you back to town government.
Thank you. Any other comments?
And I would just also, for Mr. Jones, while I did not speak to him, ask him to serve on this, I was very happy that he put his name forward. I do think it's very valuable to have someone with the institutional knowledge for just the way that town government works, serving in a volunteer capacity, being a renter, being a homeowner. Appreciate his service and what he'll bring to this work.
Thank you. And nothing else? Thank you, Doug. We'll let you know if you have to come back next week. We thank you for your service to the town. We're going to move on, finally, to the Historic District Commission. Maura Garish, did I say that correctly? If you could just let us know a little bit about yourself and why you want to serve on the Historic District Commission.
Good evening. And I appreciate you guys' stamina. Just as the impetus of why I stepped forward for this commission, I moved into Fairfield in December of '22. I bought one of the houses that backs up in Southport to the railroad tracks and began a renovation, where it was exciting to find newspapers from 1867 in the walls to see the character of the house. And I started getting curious about it and went to the Fairfield Museum and found out that the house was actually built by George Northrup, who was one of the actual builder who built a lot of the grand houses in Southport. But he had a house and he built two, a house on either side that were for his foreman. And it's not in the Historic Commission and it's not recognized by the state. But then I found out, as I was putting my new kitchen in, that UI was going to take 40 feet from my backyard as an easement. Then we know that's evolving, we're moving on. But backing up from that, I lived in Bridgewater before that. I actually grew up in Norwalk in a house that was built in the 1900s. I have done renovations for about six houses, so I know that side of it. My professional background, I spent 25 years in financial services. I have a second career as a licensed professional counselor. So I think what I bring as far as my skill set is I think I have a balance of both the financial. I hopefully can get along with people. And I also have had the experience of working in the capacity of renovating. I understand what that involves. But I also feel very strongly, having lived in other places outside of New England, the history of these towns, the beauty of these buildings is why, one of the reasons, people want to live here. And it's so important to find a balance of making them practical, moving forward, but preserving them, because it's why these towns are just so phenomenally beautiful. So that's my basic background.
Thank you for your commitment and for coming out and waiting so long. Are there any questions? Representative McCabe.
Michelle McCabe, District Four. I just want to say thank you. You're going to be, I think, a great addition to this commission.
Thank you. And I'll just add that I do want to see the line item 16 of what happened to the mental health. Just saying.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
No. Great.
Seeing none, thank you so much. Our town clerk will let you know if you have to come back next week.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, our last item, thank you. Nicholas Leeper is here for the Employee Retirement Board. If you want to come up, let us know a little bit about yourself and why you want to be on this board.
Yep. Well, good evening, everybody. I'm Nick Leeper, 75 Sherman Court. My background, I'm a managing partner of a Connecticut-based asset management firm. We focus on designing derivative and volatility-focused solutions for pensions and damas foundations, and then like private wealth management channels. I was approached a couple of years back by the Chair of the Joint Retirement Investment Board, asking about your willingness to serve, given my background in derivatives and alternatives. And she thought that would be additive to the board. I spent some time speaking to current board members at that time. And it sounded like a very interesting problem. You know, my job is to be a fiduciary to my clients, you know, these pensions, damas, foundations. And I think I have additive experience to provide to the town that would be additive to that board. Because these are big liabilities, very important to the town, very important to the pensioners. And I think I can help. I think, given even its current state, how it's moved from direct investment by the board into the outsourced CIO model, but still with some legacy direct investments in the alternative space. I think my experience can be additive to the existing board in helping to manage those liabilities or those investments through their lifetime.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Leeper? Representative McCabe.
Michelle McCabe, District Four. I just want to say thank you so much for stepping up. We're really lucky to have somebody with your vast experience to be willing to serve and to sit through this really long meeting. So we're looking forward to having you on the board, and thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you, too. If Carolyn Tribuco recommended you, she was here last month and gave us a thorough, detailed report of the board and everything. And if she recommended you, I'm all on board. So thank you. Are there any other comments? All right, thank you, Mr. Leeper. Our town clerk will let you know if you have to come back next week. Thank you. Before we break off into our committees, I just want to remind everyone, if you haven't responded to me about the tours for the Police and Fire Department, please send me an email. If you do not know what I'm talking about, please reach out to me. Both chiefs would like to know the tally. We're only allowed to have so many people at each tour. So we do need to get those numbers in. And we've promised them the next day or two. So if you could reach out to me on that. We'll break off into the committees. And chairs, don't forget to record your meetings. Thank you. Oh, yep. Representative.
Will you publish a final schedule of who's going when? Just to confirm?
I can send out a confirmation of the schedule or I might send it out to the district leaders or the caucus leaders and have them forward it, too. I'll do one of the two, yeah. But you should have all received confirmation from me. So if you haven't received an email confirming your time, then I did not get your RSVP. Thank you.